Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I want to go ahead and call this meeting's order. First item up is going into a closed meeting. Specifically be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following: Discussion, consideration, or interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body; One: Adjustment and Appeals Board; Two: Economic Development and Affordment; Three: Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Sheriff Tuck?
Aye.
We're in a closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of this meeting?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Sheriff Tuck?
Aye.
Sheriff.
Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County hereby certifies, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion, conveying the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our word to you that we're not talking about things that we're not supposed to talk about in a closed session. That being said, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Sheriff Tuck?
Aye.
Next is, we're going to observe a moment of silence, and then I would ask the, ask Clerk to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item is presentations, and the sheriff for background check, please, collection, and body cameras.
Good evening, Sheriff Martin.
Good evening.
Chairman Tuck, members of the Board, Mr. Meadows, thank you for allowing us a few minutes, and we won't take long this evening, so that we can provide the Board with a brief update concerning the Sheriff's Office body cameras and future collection fees of concealed handgun permits. Just as a brief lead-in, the Sheriff's Office purchased 121 body cameras in December of 2014. They were put into service in September of 2015. And before I turn this over to the subject matter expert on the body cameras, I need to thank Investor, or Captain Hurtling, Chief Deputy St. Clair, and especially our county IT department, specifically Joe Siah. They have put many, many, long hours into trying to solve problems that really are the responsibility of the manufacturer that were able to solve. But they have tried their best, and without going into any more details there, I'll let Captain Hurtling take over on the body cameras. He's been heavily involved since the beginning.
And Sheriff Martin, if we do have questions of you after Mr. Perkins?
Exactly. Happy to.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Ed Hurtling. I'm the captain of investigations of the Sheriff's Office. I just want to take a few minutes to go through, give you a little bit of backstory of what the body cam program consisted of and how we got there. So back in October of 2012, between October 2012 and August of 2013, in preparation for construction of the new Sheriff's Office building, several of us started going around and checking on different types of camera systems that were out there available in the market. We were specifically looking to add an interview room recording system. That was a big deal for the Sheriff's Office, for the actual building itself, and we wanted to be able to tie that in with a camera system that also did in-car video. So those were the two main things we were looking at. Body cameras at that time were not even on our radar. It really wasn't in the national attention at all at that time. So we received quotes from three different companies during that time. One of those was L-3. We actually went down to North Carolina. We viewed the L-3 system at one of the local police departments down in North Carolina. They showed us how it worked in vehicles. They showed us how it worked in interview rooms. They had positive experience with L-3, and so we were fairly confident that L-3 was going to be the way we wanted to go. Around August of 2014 is when the incident happened in Ferguson, and a large national push for body cameras came out. So that's a year from our last quote that we got. So it was a long time, long run in there. We'd already been talking with L-3 for quite a while, and when this came out, we realized that, you know, these body cameras are something we need to really start looking at as well. Our Rapid L-3 said, "We're just coming out with body cameras." We just started this product. We just put this out on the market. This is what it is. This is its capabilities. And after reviewing those capabilities, we felt it was a good product, and it fitted well with the rest of our system. It was one seamless system that did interview room, in-car cameras, and body cameras all in one. They provided us the quote in September of 2014, and then in December of 2014, we actually purchased those cameras. So when we purchased the cameras, we purchased 88 cameras at a cost of $32,700. They gave us an additional 33 cameras, which gives us our 121 number that we actually have and did report at this point. Between September 2015 and February 2016, we started a phased implementation of the program. It took some time to get the cameras installed, get all the usernames put in, and those types of things. It took a significant amount of time to set all that up, so that was the cause for all that. Now, once we actually got them working, and started actually running them for a while, we started to notice some problems. Some of the main problems we were seeing was the body cameras, each one has a specific serial number, and they call it a DVR ID number. So each camera has a DVR ID, and each camera is assigned to a specific deputy. So the camera actually has the deputy's name written on it in a label, and we have it in the database program that L-3 provides. It provides both of those items. So the system actually tracks the cameras by the DVR ID number. So what we were finding was that the DVR ID would switch, and so it would confuse one camera with another camera, and this was happening pretty often. It was causing us to create new usernames, so instead of Ed Hurtling having a body camera signed to him, I would have a body camera signed to me under one serial number, and then it would be another username, and the username would be something strange, or asterisk one unit at whatever time, and then it would list videos under that username instead of mine. So these were obvious problems. Be able to track your video, be able to find your video, especially for deputies, because deputies can only see their own videos. So if they put it under a new username, you just couldn't find those videos. Some of the videos were not uploading properly. We also had problems with when they're plugged in and not charging properly, things like that. So throughout that time where we were actually running the cameras, we were in contact with L-3, they would tell us to reset the camera, which is just basically like rebooting your computer. So press the button, reset it, and it would work for a little while, and then it would cause problems again. That was the downloading problem. That would fix that. But it was getting to the point where we're resetting cameras every single day. We also had the techs would be able to remote in, and they would be able to look at our system from their office in New Jersey, and see what the problems were and try and fix those things. So there, it was a constant struggle keeping those working. In September, I'm sorry, in July, we decided it was time to stop using the body cams, because they were having so many problems. So we took everybody's body cameras offline. We continued to work with L-3 to try and resolve the problems, and by September 2016, they decided to go ahead and just replace all of our body cameras and upgrade them to a newer model. So they upgraded us to the Revision 3. It took a couple of months for the Revision 3 cameras to actually show up, and in that time, we ended up hearing that Christiansburg Police Department was also using the L-3 body cameras, and they were having very similar problems we were having. Their problems were on a smaller scale. They only had four cameras, as opposed to our 121. So it was a much smaller, much smaller system than they had, and so they were having the same kind of problems with the duplicate ID numbers and things like that. Their salesperson offered to upgrade them to the top-of-the-line camera. So we contacted our salesperson, "Hey, upgrade us to the top-of-the-line cameras." And they said, "No, we've got to go through each other version before we get to the top of line and see if each one of them doesn't work." So in the meantime, we got the Revision 3s in. The Revision 3s were the exact same cameras that Christiansburg was having problems with, so we were obviously hesitant, sorry, not negligent, hesitant to install those, because we figured we'd have the same problems. So what we did was we put them on a smaller scale. So we issued them to investigators, and we issued them to one patrol ship. So we had a small number we could keep track of, and we could really see if they're having the same problems. So we ran those cameras for a few months, so between April and July, we ran those cameras. On that limited basis, we continued to have those same kind of problems. We would have cameras, again, not being named correctly, videos not uploading, firmware not updating properly. The main difference this time was, instead of just taking over other DVR IDs from other body cameras, it was now interfering with the in-car cameras. So a patrol car that we hadn't had any problems with before were now not able to upload videos because the DVR IDs were being confused. IT, Joe Siah from IT is absolutely fantastic, and he has worked heavily, much more heavily than I have on the project. He's worked with their techs constantly to try and get these things updated, and it just hasn't been working. They finally had a final update, but they said, "This is definitely going to fix it." So we put them back into service on a limited basis, just investigators this time, put it out in September of this year. It lasted until October, and the exact same problems were showing up. Again, with the conflicts with the in-car camera videos. So it was definitely not, their sure fix definitely did not fix it. At this point, we've put in so much man-hours and so much effort just to try and get these working, they're just not, they're not doing the job that we need. So it's time to start looking at other options. So in the meantime, we discontinued the cameras altogether, so as of October, we've had no body camera videos at all. We are looking at currently three different companies: Axon, which is a former TASER, Custom Signals, and WatchGuard. We've had meetings with them, with two of them. The third one is next week, just to see what products are out there, just to see if it's something that we can transition from one company to another. Several of the companies are saying that they can take our hardware from L-3 and basically give us free hardware, but a lot of them, the way they make their money is in storage. So we're working through those issues just to see what's a good solution, what's something that we can live with, something that's going to be good for us and good for the county. At this point with L-3, I think we need to look at what our options are as far as trying to recoup some costs, because the amount of money we spent was $32,700 just on the hardware. We paid one year of maintenance agreement. So they had a one-year maintenance agreement. We were supposed to pay three years' worth, but they never billed us for the other two. I'm assuming that's because we were constantly calling them with problems on it. That was another $3,900. So all told, we have spent $36,618. And as far as I know, the only remedy we really have with that is possibly trying to sue L-3 to try and recoup those costs. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll start with Supervisor Shepherd. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Thank you. Supervisor Demox?
I don't have any questions. I know this has probably been a very frustrating process. I appreciate the continued perseverance to get body cameras functioning within the Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much.
Well, we feel it's an important program, and the deputies feel that bit too. They really, once they saw it out in the field, they were hesitant at first, but once they got them out in the field, and if somebody complained, and there's the video, shows exactly what happened. They're doing the right thing, and you've got good people.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Yeah, I know that could be really frustrating. Other departments that bought the same merchandise, did they have the same problems?
The only one I know of is Christiansburg. We haven't gone out to see what other problems other agencies have been having with the actual L-3 body cameras. As far as I know, the other agencies that are using the in-car or the interview rooms, they're not having any issues.
Okay. How would you go about trying to recruit, get the money back, I mean, besides suing? I mean, is there, this seems to me that something needs to happen here with that company's responsibility. I mean, how do you go about trying to get anything back?
The only options I know of is either through a lawsuit or just some sort of negotiation with the lawsuit as the big stick part of it.
Then my next question would be, when you're looking at these other companies, do they have their products out, and are they being used by other departments, and are they being successfully used by other departments?
And that's part of what our research is going to include. I know that Axon is out there quite a bit. If you saw the body cam video from the Las Vegas shooting, that was Axon video. So they are out there. They're good quality products from what we've seen, but we haven't reached out to individual agencies to see how it's working.
Yeah, this goes back a long time ago when we put the munis system in this county, and it was a disaster at first, because it was not fixed to use for our county, but it was sold as it could be used for any county. That's what this reminds me of. And so my only caution would be that before, you know, any more money is spent, to make sure that whatever company that you're going to go with really has a good record out there. Because I know when you sort of jump on the boat, when it first takes off, sometimes this happens, and I really feel for you all, because I know, you know, we need it as a county, and I know you all have put all this time in trying to make it right. So that would be my only concern, is to make sure when you go with another company, it's going to be okay.
Definitely. Supervisor King?
Just a couple. I'd like to ask Martin something. If it comes down to a lawsuit, is that something we can do, or is that something we have to hire out?
I don't know. It's probably not the time or place to talk about that, but we could figure out what our options are.
And if you come across, and I know I've talked to a lot of deputies, and they, like you said to start with, they weren't too keen on wearing them, but now they like them. Is there something you can get our IT department involved in before, if and before you purchase them?
Yes, sir. And when we've had the vendors come in, they'll come in and do a demo, they'll go through their quote. We've had Phil with IT, and usually Joe Siah is in there too, because he's been so involved in the L-3. So we've included them on everything we've been doing.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Perkins?
No. Ms. Biggs, answer my questions, and Mr. King asks the others, because I wanted to know if you had an opportunity from the company just to try them out on a limited basis, and then jump into the...
Yes, ma'am. They do provide that. We haven't started that yet, because we haven't narrowed down which direction we're going. Once we give the cost information probably on this third company, that's when we start looking to see which one we're steering towards, and then start getting in some sample product just to test it out, and then evaluate, see how it's going to work.
So it was, you're saying that you had so many to do, that that sort of interfered with your ability to have these things go for a long run? Is that correct?
I don't know if it was the sheer number of it. The only comparison I can really make is between us and Christiansburg, and Christiansburg has such a small number of them. You know, some of the body cameras did work, but it's, even on a 20-camera basis, we put 20 cameras out in the field, we were still having the problems. So I don't know if it's a scalability problem, or if it's just the hardware and the firmware. It's hard to say.
Okay. Thank you.
But I also appreciate what you all have been going through. I just had a little deal with Verizon today, so I can understand the frustration that's there, but maybe not as much as you all had. Thank you.
Supervisor Creed?
No, I have no...
I just have a couple of questions, and I think your predecessor, Captain New, was involved a great deal.
He was.
Are you aware of some emails that went back from our IT staff giving some caution about whether these were going to work or not, to Captain New?
I don't personally have the information about that.
Okay. I think Supervisor King touched on it. I think that would be extremely helpful, and I am aware of some of the emails that went back through, and I think our IT department cautioned Captain New that that would not work potentially. And so having our IT department involved, I think, would be very helpful.
Yes, and they're involved in every step of the process.
And for me, I think it provides transparency, but as someone who has represented officers who've had to discharge their firearms in the course of duty, it provides something that isn't edited, and it protects the officer when they're having to make life and death decisions. And so I'm very supportive of the body cameras, but I just want to make sure that the ones we get work, and that this company is held accountable when we pay them the money, and it's really never worked. So, thank you very much, Ed. Appreciate it. Did that spark other questions from other Board members? Thank you.
One other point, Chairman Tuck?
Yes.
Is the original 121, all this predates me, by the way. We don't need that many body cameras. We didn't need that many body cameras then, and we don't need that many now. So hopefully, we can help be good stewards of the taxpayer's money, because 121 is almost, is pretty close to double what we need, to be perfectly honest about it. Chief Deputy St. Clair is here to present some information to you as far as the concealed handgun.
Good afternoon. Give you guys a handout.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're here tonight just to speak with you about the concealed carry permits that we issued in Montgomery County. Before we have gave you kind of a breakdown of what's been going on in the county with respect to the permits. The Code of Virginia 18.2 through 8.03 specifies the fees that can be charged. Currently, we charge $15, that is the county clerk's office charges 15. 10 is administrative clerk fee. That may be the wrong terminology, but it's an administrative fee, and the other five goes to the Virginia State Police when the fingerprint cards go in. You can also charge up to a $35 background fee for the backgrounds that are being conducted. And so the process of getting the hand or permit involves the applicant coming to the Sheriff's Office, the names being sent to the Sheriff's Office, and our staff conducting the background, which includes a criminal history, criminal records check. We're also checking for any disqualifiers that may be there because of any type of interaction with the mental health facilities or any type of commitments that may have occurred. And some of those can go rather quickly, within 30 minutes of work, and some may take longer, just depending on how many places they've lived, if they've been interstate or out of state. It really just depends. And so our staff spends some time doing these background checks, and filling out the form and getting it back to the clerk's office for the judge to review. If you'll see before you, there are the current fees scheduled for surrounding localities. If you look at that, every one of the top four counties, Salem City, Reno County, Reno City, and Floyd County are all charging a $35 background fee. Giles County is charging 20, and Pulaski County is charging 15. Rafferty City and Montgomery County are the only ones currently not charging anything for that background fee. We average in the county about 1,347 permits a year. That's a three-year average. If you can see, 2014 through 2016 was the numbers used to develop that average. Below that is a breakdown of projected revenue that could be collected from increasing the background fees, and I have it broke down, beginning with a $15 fee all the way through the maximum of $35 as specified in the code. So we're here tonight, basically, through your consideration of passing a resolution to allow for a collection of a background fee, and for the collection of that revenue. I would state that we spoke with finance, I believe it was last year, that they spoke with finance about collecting this, and so some of that revenue has already been taken out of the Sheriff's for this year. And I spoke with Mr. Meadows about this about a month ago, and he suggested coming up before the Board. We've already made provisions to offset the first half of this fiscal year with some carryover money. We've got that request that will be coming up before you at some point, to use part of our carryover from last year to offset that revenue that would be lost in the first half of the fiscal year. But if the Board so chooses, we would ask for their consideration in passing background fee ordinance and allowing us to begin collecting that January 1.
Supervisor Creed, do you have any questions? Supervisor Perkins?
I'm still reading.
Okay. Supervisor King?
You said you took some of it out of the Sheriff's budget already?
Yeah, there was projected, based off of the average, three-year average, it was $37,750 that was taken out of our revenue for this fiscal year that we're operating in, and we have asked for $25,000 of that in our carryover from last fiscal year to be allocated to offset part of that.
Is that to do with the permitting alone?
Yes. Yeah, you're correct.
Supervisor Biggs?
So the money you would collect would go back to the Sheriff's Office? Where does the money go back if this is passed?
It would, as far as I understand, because the money's been taken out. Martin may be able to explain better exactly how it worked. Essentially, what happened was, during the last budget process, the Sheriff's Office had a shortfall in revenue for the entire division, and they came to me and said, "We want to collect this fee, and we're going to use the proceeds from this fee to offset our shortfall." So we built in a revenue in this year's budget to cover the shortfall that they already had. And so what he is saying essentially is, they're not yet collecting the fee, so he's not going to be collecting the revenue for this part of the year that's supporting expenses in his budget that doesn't have a revenue to support. Does that make sense?
Supervisor Demox, or...
Yeah, that's...
Supervisor Demox?
So the fee would be collected at the same time that somebody would apply for a concealed carry, it's saying, I think in here I'm reading that all the payment would be made at one time in the clerk's office?
Correct, yes.
And has anybody checked, I don't know what the software needs would be, if there would be any needs in the clerk's office, has anybody checked with her to see if she has the process in place to collect it, if it was implemented?
I had spoken with Clerk Williams some time back, and I think her major thing was, was trying to set it off for not to start immediately. This was a couple of months ago when I first spoke with her. But from what I understand, she would be collecting it, and then it would be allocated by finances to where the money would go, through the finances.
But she just requested maybe a little bit of time to get ready for it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Supervisor Shepherd? I don't have any questions. Supervisor Perkins?
This is for our administrator, Craig Meadows. Craig, does this in any way impact the amount of money that you normally give back to departments to use and the other part you keep for the budget?
I don't think so, no. No, I know that as part of the carryover request, which staff's currently reviewing, you had requested some of that funding to be carried forward for this, right?
$25,000, yes, to cover the first half of the fiscal year.
But no, if it's something that's approved, then it'll be in there for revenue going forward, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I have another question.
Yes. Supervisor Perkins?
Sorry.
It's okay.
So we're allowed to do this under Virginia law? Has this ever been brought up before? Is it something that has been discussed by your office or the Board before?
To my knowledge, it has not been brought to the Board.
Not while I've been on the Board, it hasn't. Not in the last 20 years, anyway. Not in the last 20 years, anyway.
Okay.
I think, and I may be wrong, concealed weapons have become much, given the permits, there was a whole process change and it's become a lot more frequent now than it ever used to be 15 years ago. It really started to be a change, at least from my observations in the courthouse. Does that spark any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So if we were going to do this, is this item then that would be put on a further agenda? Is that what you're saying?
If it's the board's desire, we would ask that you consider that be added to an upcoming agenda. I'd like the county attorney to have a chance to make sure everything's in order as well.
And double check with the clerk's office to make sure that they're ready for it.
And... And to put it on a future agenda too, to make sure that citizens are aware and we would be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's really good.
And since we have a fee study in this meeting, it kind of works that maybe we can put, whenever we look to take action on that fee study, that we can also start taking a look at this fee as well, the first part of the year, probably.
You will, yeah.
So, thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's see, I've lost my space there. Yes, next up is public hearing, resounding request, Riley and Rebecca Thornrock, specifically a request by Riley and Rebecca Thornrock, their agent Mid-Atlantic Architects Group, PLLC, to recent a total of .0663 acres from RM1 multifamily residential with the proper conditions allowing three dwelling units to RM1 multifamily residential with the possibility of proper conditions to allow six dwelling units. And this property is located at 1534 Gallimore Road, Christiansburg, Virginia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff received a call this afternoon, the applicant has withdrawn the application. He and his agent, who was the architect, were not communicating very well and he would like to strengthen the application and put it back through the process. So staff said that we would be supportive of that, as you could see from staff's report and recommendation, the commission had several issues and he'd like to work through them. So he's withdrawn the application and it should be back before you in the next few months.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions with Emily on that issue? Thank you.
I wanted to see the presentation.
Me too.
I saw the presentation, so...
Was it good?
It was, I will say this, I believe that Mr. Thornrock is trying to get something and he is trying to work with our staff as well as the suggestions that were made from the planning commission. And it's a unique piece of property with some difficulties. And you saw from the report, there's some safety concerns on the backside of me having access. So, next item on our agenda is public address, and I don't believe that anyone has signed up, but that does not mean that you can't come and address the board. This is, the board's time to listen to you, it is not necessarily a time the board will respond. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Yes, Ms. Majors, come forward and please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. First, I want to say that I hope that our local county government continues to be responsive to the people in the county and look out for their interests because this is certainly not happening on higher levels at the state. It's called agency capture. I will give you several examples today. Salem passed a resolution a couple of days ago and they haven't been involved in this process, which is very strange because we just received, acquired a map, source water assessment map done in April 2017. Okay? This line here is the pipeline. This is their source water. This is Salem. And if you all want the map of this, it's really large, but I can send it to you. This is their intake, right here. So everything goes here. This is the first zone, which means anything, this is Salem itself, anything spills here, they're going to get it. This is the larger area, everything drains down there. So Salem passes a resolution, put some things in there. First one is, they want the Commonwealth of Virginia to diligently enforce all applicable environmental and stormwater management laws and hold the pipeline construction to the same standards that the city would be held to. Well, we all know that's a joke because any individual that wants to do anything is held to strict standards by DEQ, but this pipeline certainly isn't. The next point was that if there's any additional sedimentation and it's not mitigated, then the city requests that the sedimentation limits for Salem be increased by the amount of sediment load created by the pipeline. Apparently, they're not even thinking about what's going to happen to their drinking water. When you have sediment in your drinking water, you have increased sediment load, you have to put alum in, you have to coagulate it out, you have to filter it out. And if anybody knows they have a filter, you have to replace them, it's expensive. You have to de-water it to then dispose of it, which will be expensive. So obviously Salem is not even aware of half of the problems they're going to have. Not even aware. Those people are going to have water bills like you wouldn't believe. That pipeline will have sedimentation at the very least. With sedimentation comes the release of DDT and other horrible pesticides that have been banned a long time ago that we, as kids, used to play in. They will be released. The Water Quality Administrator for Roanoke City has been in contact with us, very alarmed. She's worried about the coating on the pipes and PCVs being released. She's trying to do calculations to determine what the state of the water for Roanoke City is going to be. And they don't get their water directly, completely, from the Roanoke River like Salem does. Salem's not even thinking about this yet. When I asked for the resolution signed, because I just have the one that was passed but not signed yet, the secretary or whoever that I talked to said, "Why do you want this?" And I said, "Well, we're keeping track of things and seeing who's against the pipeline." She said, "Well, we're not against the pipeline, we just want to hold them to the same standards." And I'm like, again, this shows, you know, your complete lack of understanding of what's about to be followed. I am going to stop there and Tina's going to come and finish up with what the health effects are with the sedimentation, just so you guys continue to keep it in your minds. And again, thank you very much, on your own, for doing the rehearing request, we really
Tina Smoosh, 5555 Mount Tabor Road, Montgomery County, Virginia. And I'm really here to thank you all. It was, we were all overjoyed seeing the rehearing requests that you all have put forth. And I just can't thank you enough for hanging in there with all of us through this whole process. In continuing to research things that we worry a lot about, particularly the things that can impact our county, I've been reviewing the final environmental impact statement, it's that 900 and some page document, I haven't read it all, that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission put together using information from the Mountain Valley Pipeline. So you all know what a gas leak smells like, correct? And the reason you know is because an odorant called Mercaptin is put, is introduced into the odorless methane gas. We'd never know there were gas leaks if there wasn't an odorant in there. So one of the concerns of a number of us is the fact that there is no Mercaptin, no odorant at all, put in the gas that's transmitted through our 42-inch diameter dragon that's headed through our county. And I had asked MVP on a couple of occasions when they had public hearings, you know, why isn't there Mercaptin? And I would get these vague answers like, "Well, you can't put it in a pipeline that big," or "It's not really needed." So I've done some research and two of the resources are actually pipeline workers who have worked on large pipelines. The other is the American Petroleum Institute, has a really good website, and then researching it through other sources. We were talking to a woman who lives near the Sable Pipeline that you all have heard about in the news, it goes down through Louisiana and Florida. There's been multiple spills. And we were talking with her one night when she was in the area here and she said something about the Mercaptin in that pipeline, and that's a 36-inch pipeline. And I said, "What do you mean, there's Mercaptin in that line? You can't put it in the big lines," that was my understanding. She goes, "Oh, no, you can put it in a line any size." So it turns out that Mountain Valley has chosen not to put Mercaptin into the line so we have an odorless enormous amount of gas going through our forest. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission said that was Mountain Valley's choice. And what I discovered with talking with the pipeline workers and doing more research is, you can't have Mercaptin in gas that's intended for export as liquefied natural gas. So if they put Mercaptin in, it would tie their hands in terms of whatever percentage they want of this gas to go for, for an export. The thing that worries me a lot is that there are remote sensors that are spaced at intervals along the pipeline that tell a station in Pennsylvania that there might be a leak. We won't know if there's a leak because we won't smell it, those of us that live out in the country along the pipeline. The sensors that go through Montgomery County are between 11 and 12 and a half miles apart. If the remote station in Pennsylvania that's monitoring 24 hours a day notes a drop in pressure, they shut down the mainline valve on either side of where they detect that pressure drop. But they have a choice. They can either shut down the mainline valves, which is a pretty big deal to stop that much gas all of a sudden, or they can send someone out to kind of take a look around and see what they find. So that's, if it's built, that's what's going to be occurring along the route through our county. No other local citizens who will probably be monitoring their property daily won't know if it's leaking unless they hear something or see that there's foliage that isn't growing quite right along the pipeline. So, anyway, thank you. It's a serious risk, I appreciate you all continuing in this battle.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
I won't take five minutes, I promise. My name is Anita Puckett, I live at 306 Rucker Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I simply want to echo what Linda and Tina said about thanks to you all for this amazing document, this request for rehearing that you all approved the other day. It is thorough, it is so pertinent to our county. And as the person who's working mostly on the historic issues, I sent out our particular request with our attorney to you all earlier today and I'd ask for you to read it. I'll probably be back to talk more about that, but thank you for mentioning historic properties in this district along with everything else. So that's it, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one coming forward, I believe we do have an addendum.
Yes, sir, we do. We have an addendum, the board's consideration, a resolution of recognition for the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cruden?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Senator.
Chair Tuck?
Yes.
Can you indulge a request just really quick? We have Mr. English here from the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad. Can he get up and just speak for a moment about what it is that we've just done and what the award is that they won?
Absolutely, I was going to say, take this opportunity.
If you're comfortable, not to put you on the spotlight or anything.
Thank you, Chairman Tuck and Board, great. I'd really just like to take a few moments to just thank you all for your support. You know, our agency was very blessed to win an award and initially, we had won at the local level and so we got nominated for the Governor's Award. And this past weekend, we traveled up to Virginia Beach and we actually were fortunate enough to win, so we were recognized as the outstanding EMS Agency of the Year for the whole state. And that's roughly 640 EMS agencies that are licensed in the state, so I think it's a big accomplishment for this whole county and this whole community because it definitely wasn't just me and it wasn't just our agency, it was really everyone. And the support that you all show and the citizens of Montgomery County and the strong ties to supporting volunteerism and, you know, just making sure that we are all able to do our jobs and take care of the people of Montgomery County, so I appreciate it.
They, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I just, I live in the town and I had reason to call on you when my brother-in-law lived with us. And because I live right in town, when students have sometimes come home from parties and not made it to their house, and I just want to compliment you and the volunteers from the Blacksburg Rescue Squad because the professionalism and the care that was demonstrated in all the different encounters that I've had cannot be matched anywhere. And I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Pass that along to them.
Thank you very much, Dan.
And I get to that because I also had to use them. Thank you.
Next up is consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Cruden?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Senator.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, the first item we have under work session is a review of the Montgomery County Fee Study. Angie's passing out some information and I believe Mark Gruder and Paul Kaiser are going to be our presenters this evening, so. You can tell it's already budget time because Mark's already done his arm in his lungs. It's a rough season already.
I'm a boy.
He just wants to show you he can do one hand.
That's a good...
The one-handed budget man.
Okay, what you just got handed was a copy of the presentation which you're going to see this evening, the user fee results summary report, and then there's a nice cost example for a 2,000-square-foot house, which I'll go into more detail as we get into the fee study. Okay, I wanted to give a little background. There was a request made by the board for us to do a comprehensive fee analysis. This analysis was performed over the summer and early fall of this year. And before I get into the details of the actual analysis, I want to go over and talk about the team that was involved in this. We had a fairly robust team, which consists of Scott Woodrum, he's the county's Director of Engineering and Regulatory Compliance, Bill Yeager, the county's Chief Building Official, Emily Gibson, the county's Planning Director, Mitchell Hawke, the county's Parks and Rec Director, Eileen Mahan, who is the new Animal Control and Adoption Facility Director, myself and Paul Kaiser from the Finance Department. And I just want to say, before we get into this, I want to thank everybody on the team. We spent a tremendous amount of time, they spent a tremendous amount of time, putting the... together this information that you're going to see to give a complete picture of our fees and how we compare to other jurisdictions. I also want to specifically thank Paul Kaiser. He's sort of been my wingman through this process in more ways than one. And really, without his support, we wouldn't be here right now tonight to discuss this. Okay, the last time that we did a fee study was in 2012, and I came before the board at that time and talked to you about fees. But during that time period, we were in a sort of a downturn in the economy, so we decided not to actually implement any new fees or adjust any of our fees at that time. The last time that we did a fee study that resulted in fee increase was in 2007, and I was here then too. And we made increases to the fiscal year 2008 budget, and increases were made in building inspections and planning. That was nearly 10 years ago. And what was interesting, when we went through the study and we started comparing against other jurisdictions, we found that most of the other localities that we had surveyed had not increased their fees in 10 years as well. And so it was kind of interesting that, you know, we were sort of in the same boat with everybody else. So let's talk about what user fees are. User fees are a designated revenue source that are charged by a locality for specific services that are provided by the locality. And they're used to pay for all or for at least some part of the cost of providing the So what makes them different from other county revenues? The payments for user fees are tied directly to the services provided. So unlike user fees, most of the local revenues that you receive come from property taxes, which are paid by everybody in the county. And those dollars that you collect are then used to pay for services throughout the county. But in many instances, those revenues that are received, there's no direct link between, say, a taxpayer and the service. That taxpayer may or may not use the particular service on which those fees are being collected for. But in this instance, the payments are tied directly by the consumers that use the service. So you have a one-for-one relationship between those that pay for the fee and those that are receiving the service for the fee in which the fee is being collected. So why are they important to our revenue structure? Well, the user fees provide revenue diversification, and it creates some level of tax burden equity. And again, as I was saying before, you have a one-for-one relationship between those that are paying the cost and those that are receiving the service. Okay, the areas that we looked at, again, animal care and adoption, general services, environmental services, building inspections, planning, and parks and recreation. So the next question is, okay, so how do we set our user fees? And there's actually two ways in which you can do that. One is a cost-based method, which basically links your revenue collections to the cost of providing the service. And so in theory, you could try to recover 100% of your cost. Now, in some instances, if you have an enterprise fund, you could actually try and recover more than your cost, okay, and generate a profit margin. For example, if the county was operating a municipal golf course or water park, they could actually generate a profit, and then take those profits and then put it back into the golf course or whatever in order to maintain it. But for the most part, when you're looking at user fees, you're looking at trying to cover 100% or less. The revenue-based method links collection based on an amount of revenue or fee that the locality believes or feels is equitable. So, in that instance, you may decide, well, we don't really want to cover 100%, we want to subsidize some portion of it, and so you set the rate to collect 50 or 75, or whatever percent you choose. So the county's approach this year was to look at a blended approach, where we looked at both the cost side and the revenue side. We looked at consolidating and simplifying the fees where we could. We looked at adding some new fees. And then, based on the recommendations of the departments that were involved in the fee study, we compared our fees against other localities across the state. Okay, so when we did that comparison, there were a few things that were consistent. We made sure that we compared it against the town of Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, Reno County, and at least three other localities that provide similar services. And then we allowed it up to basically the division or department director to decide which of those additional localities they would consider. And there was reasons for that. For example, in Parks and Recreation, the competition that Mitchell is facing is from the surrounding area. So it made sense that we would compare against those jurisdictions, because that's who he's competing for, for different sports. But for, say, stormwater or planning, just because of the framework and how we look against the rest of the state, we might look at some different localities that were not necessarily local because of the regulations that the state imposes on us by our sides. Okay? So we left it up to the department directors to decide on those additional localities which ones they would choose. Initial observations, the one thing that we noticed was that we were not collecting anywhere close to 100% of our costs. In fact, we didn't exceed 35% of our total cost when we were looking at those fees. None of our fees were in the highest categories charged when we compared against other jurisdiction. In many cases, we were the lowest. We noticed some localities charge for fees that the county also provides services for, but doesn't charge a fee. And then we realized, when we started looking at different localities, not everybody does it exactly the same way. Some localities look at square footage, some look at value. And so to make things comparable, and this is where this piece of paper is going to come into play later, we sort of had to make some adjustments to standardize so we could show you, okay, what does this really mean? In other words, if you looked at a 2,000-square-foot house, how much would it cost you here? How much would it cost you in Blacksburg? How much would it cost you in Reno County and so forth? And then we noticed, again, as I've already stated, that a lot of localities hadn't changed their fees in many years. But what they said was, considering that we were looking at it, they were going to look at our results and then make some adjustments. That will have an impact on what decisions we make, because if we were significantly below them, and then we adjust to get to their level, and then they turn around and increase, then we're going to be, again, below where they were. So that will have an impact. Recommended fee increases. An increase in fees in some areas is justified to improve the cost-to-revenue ratio. None of the recommended fee increases results in the county being the highest in any particular category. Again, however, because of these other jurisdictions are thinking about increasing their fees, if they do that, and we could very easily be right in the same boat as being the lowest again. And in most instances, the recommended fee remains below the average against the other comparison jurisdictions. So let's go through the fees. And now, these are the fees in which a recommended increase has been made. And so I'm not going to read all of these off to you. You can see here that it starts off with Animal Control, or Animal Care and Adoption, and it shows you the current fee and what the recommended fee is. And in most instances, they're modest increases.
Can I ask a question about the adoption fee? Does that include, is there a rebate if you spay that animal? Or, and you may not know, and I was looking over towards Mary. I know some places, if you spay an animal, pay to have it spayed, that you can get a portion of the adoption fee back. Do we do that?
I don't have that in front of me. But I would pick that for you.
I think our fee includes spaying.
Or does it include?
I thought ours aren't supposed to be leaving unless they were spayed.
We will verify that.
Because we don't want them wandering around out there creating more.
Okay, so again, here's Animal Care and Adoption. Next slide shows Building Inspections, and you can see the increases there, and Stormwater at the bottom. Next slide shows Planning, Parks and Recreation. And then we added a few new fees in General Administration, and that was for the use of the county's meeting rooms, which we found, when we started looking at other jurisdictions, that most everybody is charging some level of a fee for outside entities to use the county's facilities for their particular uses.
And many times, we have to have personnel involved with the use of those rooms, so we felt like we need to take that step.
All right, the next slide gives you a fee comparison. This shows basically most of the fees in the study, not all the fees, and there was a reason for that, but in order to get everything to work on the scale, there are a few that have been left off of this particular chart. But as you can see, in most cases, the recommended fee is lower than the average fee across the category when we compared it against other jurisdictions. All right, so the next slide talks about Building Inspections. And again, this is where this little sheet of paper that we put together, that I included in the packet, comes into play. And because different jurisdictions use different methods for how they calculate, we went in and we looked at the jurisdiction, and we said, okay, let's use an example. If you came to Montgomery County and you wanted to build a 2,000-square-foot house, how much would you have to pay? And how does that compare currently with the recommended fee, and then how it compared against other jurisdictions? And as you can see, that our current fee on that 2,000-square-foot house would be $551 for Montgomery County. And with the recommended fee increases, we go to $632. And if you look at the average across the board, we're at $688. So even with the recommended fee increase, we're still below the average. Now, I'm going to leave a caveat here, in that we took the most conservative value when we looked at jurisdictions. And what we found was that in some instances, multiple fees were being charged by jurisdictions depending upon, for example, whether or not the general contractor came in and selected and paid for the building permit, or whether or not it was subbed out to multiple contractors. So you may have an instance in which a jurisdiction charges one building permit fee for the general contractor, and then comes back in, and say you have somebody that's doing paving work, they charge them another building permit fee, which then grossly underestimates how much, if we, based on our conservative number, these numbers are going to be at the bare minimum, where in fact, you know, some of these jurisdictions are charging way more than what is represented on this piece of paper. And one of those jurisdictions that we discovered some of this was with the town of Blacksburg. And so, but we couldn't get concrete data on exactly how that was being done. But in some instances, if they were able to find that there were multiple contractors doing things, they would charge an additional fee for that. So I just want to point that out, that these are the most conservative numbers that we have for this. Okay, this is the non-residential comparison. And again, our current fee is $3,774. With the recommended fee, we'd be just slightly over $4,000, and the average is, you know, $3,800 or so. Almost $3,900. All right, so what does this do as far as the fiscal impact by division? And what you'll see here is there's not a tremendous amount of revenue that's going to be generated as a result of this fee increase. If you look at just the rate increases alone, you're looking at $62,000 in new revenue. And then because we are having a significant volume increase in Animal Care and Adoption, you're seeing an additional $45,000, because we're able to do more with that facility than we were previously with the old animal shelter. So in total, you're looking at $107,000. Again, the total increase is 107, $45 is due to additional animal adoptions, 62 is a result from the rate increases. And even with this, we're still going to be below 40% of our cost recovery. So again, we're nowhere close to collecting 100% of our costs. Next steps. Board needs to make a decision on, you know, if we want to do these fee changes, we would need to incorporate the fee structure into the fiscal year 19 budget, and then we would have the new fee structure take place with that budget on July 1 of 2018. With that, I will entertain any questions you may have. I know there's a tremendous amount of information here, it's going to take a while for you to digest all this. So even if you don't have questions tonight, if you have questions, you can send them to us, and we will answer them as best we can.
I think it's your turn, Supervisor Shepherd. Do you have any questions at this time?
I don't, not right now.
Supervisor Moss.
Not right now, no.
Supervisor Biggs.
My only question was related to the Animal Care and Adoption Center. Did they feel like that that would deter people at all from adoption, or were they okay with that?
No, these were Eileen's recommendations as to what she wanted to do.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor King.
Did you say if we voted to do this, we're still 40% below what it cost us to do it?
If you voted for this, the way that it's structured, we still are only collecting 40% of our cost for the services being provided. So in essence, the general fund is still subsidizing these departments by roughly 60%. And currently, we're at 35% cost recovery, which means that the general fund is providing 65% of a subsidy to make these programs work. Thank you.
Supervisor Perkins.
I'm just amazed at how you reached each one of these things that you recommended here as an increase, knowing that it's still 60% below what the...
Well, I mean, I think what we were trying to accomplish was to put us in line with other jurisdictions. And I think that if you went to other jurisdictions, you would find that they're not recovering 100% of our costs. I mean, and in no way is that happening. Really what this is about is, and it's really not about the cost recovery piece, it's trying to put us in position where we are consistent with our peers as far as what they're charging and, you know, what we probably should be charging based on that comparison.
So is this something you would do every year as the budget comes around, or you anticipate another 10 years with that?
Well, I think that you have to sort of look at conditions, you know. Again, we looked at it in 2007, we came back five years later, a decision was made at that time not to do anything. You know, I don't know that, you know, to do this study, I mean, it was pretty comprehensive and it took a lot of time, so I don't know that we would have the manpower to do this every single year and then be able to accomplish some other things. But I think that it's something that we need to look at, probably more consistently than every 10 years.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It seems to me it's something that you'd want to do frequently in order to keep abreast of what's going on, and that would be a part of the, looking at the total budget and what this part presents.
Supervisor Creer.
Maybe a couple of little things. I'm interested in where this money goes to rest after it's been taken in. Who, who, who actually knows that money?
The money itself actually goes in to support the operations of the department. So for example, there would be $62,000 in revenue that is added to that department, which in, you know, the board would have the decision to do one of two things. You could either add the revenue to their expenditure budget, or you could reduce the net general tax support that is currently supporting that in the upcoming year. So it basically will provide you at a minimum with, you know, $62,000 plus $45,000, $107,000 in new monies to spend. And those dollars can, those dollars will be put against those expenses that exist in their budget and increasing expenses. And so it just means that next year, when we build the budget, there's $107,000 in undesignated revenue that you don't have to put to their departments in order to cover their expenses going forward.
But we don't know exactly how much that's going to be, do we? Don't we get it?
The undesignated piece? Well, I have a projection for you in the early part of the spring and February.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You've given us a lot to think on. Thank you very much. I want to thank the staff for putting this all together.
Thank you.
Was there any other questions? I didn't mean to, did anyone else have any other questions?
Wins Paul's part of the presentation.
He did.
Okay. Well, next up is alternative form of a local government. Carol.
I'm sure we got lots of papers, colorful papers.
Take a reading.
She's trying to take it back.
What I planned to do tonight was just review some information. Some issues came up at our last discussion with this topic of alternative forms of government and to go over some additional information about some of the items discussed. And also maybe present to you some things that you hadn't thought about in terms of Clarifications, I guess is what I've called this, but there were several things mentioned about how some functions would operate. And I just want to go over those again to make sure everybody's on the same page with it. A question was raised about what would happen with the Health Department. Well, Montgomery County is a part of the New River Health District, but within that, all of the localities in the New River Valley have their own health departments. There is nothing about that process that would change with a different form of government. We would still continue to participate in the state local cooperative health budget, and we would still have our share of the cost of that be matched with the state share of 62%. A question was raised about New River Community Services. That again, state law requires that every city or county establish with either a loan or with other cities and counties, a community services board. We have done that with others counties and the city within the New River Valley. There's nothing about that that would need to change at all. And the same thing with the Department of Social Services. You're required to establish Department of Social Services. There is one for the county, and nothing about that would have to change. There are also some questions raised about funding. So I'm going to try and walk you through what the current funding situation is for the two offices of the Commissioner and the Treasurer, and the information that we've received from the state about what funding would be available compared to those two offices at the state level if you were to establish a Director of Finance. Funding for both the Commissioner and Treasurer totals almost $2 million. And of that almost $2 million, the county dollars support 80% of that amount. The State Compensation Board or state funds themselves support only about 20% of this cost. There are 26 positions in both of those offices. And let me try and walk you through this chart a little bit. The first column says Compensation Board Dollars. That is the total between the two offices of the state dollars provided to support those offices. It's a little less, and this comes from the current year fiscal 18 approved budget. It's around $400,000. Well, when the State Compensation Board provides funds for positions, they don't provide 100% of any of that. The county has to pick up what the state does not cover in terms of positions. So the State Compensation Board and the county share in 14 positions for those two offices. However, the county has to provide an additional $645,000 in addition to the Compensation Board Dollars in order to cover those positions and costs within the offices. In addition to that, the county provides a 100% county dollars for 12 FTE between those two departments. So the total amount of the county's investment between those two offices is about 1.6 million out of the total cost of almost 2 millions. The State Compensation Board was asked to provide some estimates of what dollars would they provide, and that's what this chart shows. There's a difference in the current revenue because they're looking at next year estimating for fiscal year 19. The difference is about $75,000. And that, as you can see, comes from the fact that they would not be reimbursing at the level they do for the two officer positions. The amount, $75,000 or so, is less than 4% of the total. So the bottom line is about 96% of the total dollars currently supporting those offices would continue. Some assumptions that we look at or have heard either from board members or I've tried to take into consideration, things that would occur should the board choose to move forward with this option. The first one is that all current filled positions, of course excluding the two officer positions, would be retained, that there would be no massive rift, that people and jobs would continue in those jobs. A new organizational structure would need to be developed, which would consolidate the major functions. Any future vacant positions would need to be analyzed to determine whether there's a need to fill the position, whether it needs to be reallocated to another function within the office, or if the position needs to be eliminated, there's not a need for it any longer. And all of that would come from the development of a new consolidated finance department, which we would make the assumption that we would absorb within the funds available currently between the three major departments that comprise the financial functions. And I guess I wanted to share with you some things that maybe you hadn't thought about that might be some opportunities when we look at whether or not an alternative form of government is something that the county wants to pursue. I think the first of those still has to do with the fact that what you are essentially doing with this transition is to reorganize all the financial functions of the county. And you would have the opportunity to do that in a way to enhance efficiency, some communication and some coordination of all the major functions under a single point of contact for customer service. You would have the opportunity for staff in those respective offices to be considered as having grievance rights. They're technically become civil service. That increases job security, and they no longer serve at the pleasure of an individual There is the opportunity, I think, to avoid future costs through consolidation and multi-functioning of some positions. I think there's also the opportunity to preserve the leadership by eliminating a possible change in elected officers every four years. There is an opportunity, I think, also to have cross-training among all the major financial functions of the county to increase the skills and the efficiency among all the employees in those functions. That would then, I think, offer some other opportunities for employees for a greater career development, greater promotion potential, because employees would have a larger consolidated department to work with then, where they could be cross-trained on numerous functions. And that provides, more easily provides a career ladder for employees. And that's all the information I have to present tonight. I'll be glad to try and address any questions or-
I'll start with Supervisor-
Or be quiet.
Supervisor Perkins, do you have any questions at this time?
Who?
Yes.
I don't know what started that, but anyway, maybe we, no, no, not this time.
Supervisor King.
Is there, I know what the difference is, I don't have it with me. Oh, I know the Compensation Board pays the Commissioner and the Treasurer, and then we upgraded them some. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the officers?
Officers.
Yes.
Do you have the amounts that we pay each one of? You know, like if they, Compensation Board says they need 50, and we give them 70. The difference that we pay on top of their compensation?
I don't have it in front of me. I can certainly send that to you. I don't have it right off.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, so you didn't find any cons in this, only positives?
Well, I'm sure you will hear from other groups of the alternative things that they believe would be considered cons. They, what I was trying to do here is walk through some things that you hadn't heard already, that maybe when you hear the other side, which you will from various other groups, to also consider some things that might be a positive for the county and could offer some opportunities for employees as well.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Demonts.
That actually was, I wrote down, under questions, are there any negatives? And I think I said this the last time we talked about it. I have a, still, even after the financial report and some of this additional information, I do have a little personal objection to losing the elected positions. I understand that it could result in a lack of, or a loss of institutional knowledge every four years, but I think it's also a critical component of citizen representation.
Supervisor Shepard?
I don't have any questions.
I want to go over a couple of things in regards, and I think I know where Supervisor King's going. We supplement the, currently, all the constitutional officers are frozen, and it's a resolution that was passed. Once we hit 100,000, then we're simply going to pay them what the Comp Board tells them to pay. And so, in my head, so we're going to lose those two top positions, but we're only losing about $74,000 in revenue when we lose those two top positions. Am I thinking correctly?
Well, that's what the Comp Board has told us.
Okay. So if we just rounded off and said both of them were making $100,000, we would still be looking at saving about $126,000 potentially, but then we need to be able to hire Finance Director as well.
Yes.
Okay. In looking at this, I know you mentioned future savings. We've had requests in the past for as many, as I recall, eight employees from previous, specifically one of the constitutional officers asked for numerous positions. You talk about, in the future, we wouldn't possibly need to hire as many employees because we wouldn't be consolidated. Is that what?
I think that's, yeah, I think there's a valid potential there. Now, obviously, if it's the board's decision to move forward, you're going to want to spend a lot of time, and it's going to take much effort in talking to people in all three of the major functions of finance within the county to determine what is the best organizational structure to put in place. But obviously, when you have the ability to train people in many facets, then it has the potential that as you move forward, you may not need to add as many positions as you would if they were in separate functions, because you would want to maximize the ability to cross-train and multi-function.
And that's the, if I can tag on that, I think from the staff's perspective, that's been one of the biggest opportunities that I think we've seen, is that the opportunity, it's not about the people in that department, in those two departments or two offices. They're very strong, dedicated employees in both of those areas that have served in our citizens, and I've talked to quite a few of them. It's an opportunity to bring it under a larger umbrella, if you will, of fiscal management to eliminate some of the, some of the back and forth that we see in citizens that have to go through from time to time when they come in, and just an opportunity to provide better efficiency for our customers, for our citizens.
Along with lines, there are times you've got lines outside the Treasurer's office, but it doesn't seem like you have lines outside the Commissioner's, because you have different time periods. So we would be able to shift, let's say, employees from Commissioner of Revenue, so we wouldn't have lines standing outside of the Treasurer's office in those, in December, when property taxes are due, is why I see those lines, and then again in roughly late May and June. Is that some of the efficiencies that you're talking about?
Well, yes, certainly. I think you would have the flexibility and a larger pool of people to be able to move them to the most immediate task at hand. You don't have that much flexibility. You were-
Supervisor Perkins.
Well, we have done some things to help mitigate those long lines. I mean, we do have a deposit box. As a matter of fact, that, what came to me is tonight, I saw a car after car after car going. I was sitting out there for almost an hour, and they were dropping in. I know they were dropping in their tax forms because they stopped, and some of them, you know, they were going different ways, but they were all putting it in that, a box that's out there.
That's true. There are a couple of times a year, especially the day or two before the due dates on real property in December and June, that we do have fairly long lines.
Yes, because people take great pride in being able to take their ticket and their money and go to the person that's in there and say, "I paid my taxes." So that is, I think that's a positive, you know, point too, to think that this helps the citizens.
Oh, absolutely.
As they're paying.
And I think what we're talking about as well is we want to make sure those citizens get the best service they can when they come into the building and not have to stand in a line for an hour to pay their taxes.
Yeah, well, that's true, but I know an awful lot of them don't want to, don't mind standing in line for an hour to pay their taxes, because it's so important to them to be able to do it. And most of the time, it's not the people who are paying enormous amounts of taxes. The people I see coming in there are just, you know, ordinary straightforward citizens that are saying, "I am so glad that I am able to pay my taxes." Then there are others who obviously are very unhappy about it, because they don't want to pay taxes, period. And obviously, we charge too much, so they pay.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one more for Craig, and I guess, well, never mind, I'll withdraw that one.
I didn't even hear.
That's the attorney, sometimes you withdraw that question before-
Before it's even spoken.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carol.
And if I can just tag on to that last comment, I really do appreciate all the work that Carol and Mari have done as well on this issue. I know that we spent a lot of time researching information and talking with other communities. I just appreciate all the work they've done.
And our next step for this process is to get input from the Commissioner of Revenues Association to hear, in a work session, so we can exchange, ask questions of individual presenters. We've reached out to Alamoor, and apparently, when I was down at the Laco, there was, the Gaylight has, and I think they've done it a little bit differently, but they removed their Treasurer. They kept their Commissioner of Revenue, but removed their Treasurer's office. So I will try to reach out to them just to, and they did that fairly recently, within the last, say, eight or 10 years.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Have we looked at the- Have we looked at the number of individuals that would have to be employed? I know we got a number, so many are employed and some between two of the departments, but in the commissioner's office?
We wouldn't, eh, eh, as, as Carol mentioned in her presentation, eh, the goal would be to retain all the staff.
Right, I think.
And spend time, you know, looking at opportunities in the future, as, as opportunities may come up through attrition or other things. If there are efficiencies, then we'd look at that time.
Sure.
But there would be no change in the number of personnel in those two offices, other than the commissioner and treasurer.
So, there would be technically two, two reps, but then maybe one director.
Who is, what would that individual be named?
The, the individual that would be responsible for that would be a director of finance.
Responsible for the commissioner of revenue's job and responsible for all of the?
Yes, ma'am.
Finance.
Yes, ma'am. It would, eh, eh, what happens when you change to that former government is you have a director of finance that's responsible for all the billing, assessing, and collection.
But what about all the revenue, the automobiles, the keeping up with how we do?
None of that changes.
But again, you'd say the finance director?
Would be responsible for those staffs in those two offices. Those functions would still be the same. It would just be the management and oversight of that function that would be different.
So, each one of those individuals would, that one individual would probably have to have two assistant directors?
Well, absolutely. You, you would still need, eh, just as they have now. The treasurer has a chief deputy treasurer, the commissioner of the revenue has a deputy commissioner. Those positions would still stay.
And have we thought about the increase in population that is due to take place in this community with the advancement of, eh, more individuals in the universities?
Eh, that would be something that would come into consideration over time, but it really shouldn't change the, the oversight. You may need additional employees in the future.
That's what I'm saying, additional employees.
In the future. Yeah, we, no.
But not to start with.
No, not initially.
I have a hard time seeing that. The, eh, I'm just getting that into my mind, because there's so many functions in each of those departments. Eh, no keeping the same amount of people should even it out, but then you've got to have other individuals that are overseeing the, the staffs that are currently in those offices. So, that indicates to you, you're going to have to hire more people. Or you can take one of your staff that you've got in each office now and say, "Okay, you're going to be responsible for this." And you're, but does that, does that cut down then on the number of individuals that can be seen? The number of citizens that can be seen by those staff people?
Is, as far as the operational aspects of the two areas, we don't see any change initially at all, because they're already structured with, eh, if you will, chief deputies. It would just be the commissioner position itself and the treasurer position itself.
So, I'm assuming then that you and the administrative staff are in favor of changing?
And I wouldn't, I don't think that it's their decision, and I don't think it's fair to ask the staff's position on whether they want to go, eh, this, that's a decision for us to have to make.
I know, but I'm, eh, I didn't say that. I said, "You are in favor." I said, "From what I gather, from what's been said, they are in favor of perhaps going to a different form." Maybe not, but I'm just saying that.
I don't think that that is fair to do to our staff when it is our decision. I think their job, and what they've done is provide us, there were some questions.
I know it's their job, but I'm going back to what Ms. Biggs asked when she said, "There are no cons." When somebody comes to me with only positive, eh, support, then I gather that if there were, if they weren't in favor, they'd be giving me some cons.
I think what we asked the staff to do is provide us, one, answers to some of her questions, which we did, they did initially.
Sure.
And then they've also provided us the numbers, which they have done, and provides the structure. Next meeting, we're going to have, I imagine, some folks with some very strong opinions from Drummond County and from outside the county, and from folks from Alamoorl to help us understand how they went through the process in, I think, 2002. Maybe from Gay Life, maybe for some other localities.
What if, what if, eh... I'll hold this until my member report. I'll hold this question.
I'd also like to just say something, or you can go first if you want.
Eh, go ahead, and then I'll do mine.
Eh, I've kind of been looking through my notes from our last meeting, where we had, eh, two people here to discuss this with us. We had Dr. Holt from Virginia Tech, and then, eh, who was the other person that we had here?
Mark.
Mark. Sorry about that, Mark. It was a great presentation. That was embarrassing. And what I said at, at that time, eh, was, eh, one, eh, that I, that I have faith in the competence of the electorate, and I think that's kind of a, a theme that, I think this is the third time that I've said it. I have a, a bit of a, a problem myself, eh, with eliminating positions that, eh, the citizens have elected. Because I feel like there's a purpose that they've elected, that those are elected positions. I feel like there's, there's good reason for those to be elected positions. I'm interested in having a discussion amongst us while we're in work session and seeing how everybody is feeling about this, because we're talking about, eh, future expenses to bring people here. Eh, and I, I, I've told several of you, I'm all about getting information, eh, to, to make a fully informed decision. But at the same time, I'm also conscious of how we're spending taxpayer dollars to get that information and, and, eh, whether the board feels like we need to continue with this or not. Eh, one thing that stands out, eh, of, of real importance to me is the fact that it changes not only the Department of Finance and the treasurer and the commissioner of revenues office, but it also changes how this board of seven is elected. And I keep revisiting in my own mind that seven people on the ballot at the same time trying to legislate, eh, and win an election, might not be in the best interest, not only of the citizens, but of the staff. Because, you know, elections are divisive, and people have to stake their claim and, and toe the line and hold a position. And that could really create a very divisive situation up here. And it could also create a turnover of the entire board, where you lose all institutional knowledge in one fell swoop. And I, I think that's very negative, and that is something that could easily happen if we transition to a different form of government. Those are some of my reservations, eh, and I'd be interested in hearing from my colleagues if they're experiencing some reservations, if they're feeling very, you know, positive about this. I'd just be really interested in hearing how everybody is feeling, or what they're thinking.
Well, my, eh, issue, eh, this didn't come from citizens asking us to change our former government. It came from one member of the board, and we didn't even really, it didn't even come up in any kind of retreat or anything like that. So, it seems to me that it's sort of a top-down thing. I mean, I know it would have to be a referendum, but I have reservations, as Ms. Demoss does, first about everyone running at the same time. I've seen where, eh, through my work with Laco, where that, sometimes it's not a good situation. I've also seen how it's been turned on staff. Like if some, if a, if a board wants to get rid of a county administrator or a county manager, for whatever reason. I see it being two less representatives that citizens can elect. I personally feel that if we're really concerned about making everything efficient, years ago, I mean, what's wrong with having a discussion and involving our constitutional officers in, in customer service? Like if there's really this big problem out there, then, you know, like, do we ever sit down with our constitutional officers and say, "Hey?" No, we don't. Do we ever meet with them as a board? No, we don't. And so, you know, I, I also feel that this is something that is being addressed. Like it, we want to have a resolution to it, and it's on a fast track. And I have a real concern that we've got two of our board members leaving and two new board members coming on. And I would hate to see this carried into the new year, where two board members without any experience walk into a situation where they're going to have to be confronted with making a decision, because that happened to two of our board members that are presently on the board two years ago. So, I have lots of reservations about it. I think if it was something that we really, really wanted to look at, that maybe more time than three meetings ought to be, you know, provided, and I just, eh, I have, I have a lot of reservations about it, I'll just be real honest. And so, those are my comments.
Is there any other supervisors that would like to be heard?
Well, I started and didn't get very far. But my question, instead I ask, about whether or not the administration sees anything wrong with it, with a change, or would they think it was more appropriate for us to, to change? I frankly, eh, don't want to say anything, because I'm not going to be here. I can go ahead and tell you that I don't really approve of what we're doing, or the way that we're doing it. I didn't, I don't know what was wrong that caused us to need to change things. I don't, I see a, a great deal of reason why there are some people who want it changed, but I, nobody ever asked me anything about it. And that might be because I, I was at a point in, in my life when perhaps I wasn't putting as much, eh, thought into this situation as, as I should have. So, eh, I'm not saying this to anybody, but number one, I know who makes, supposed to make the decision. It's a board. It's seven people are supposed to make the decision. This is a policy board. We don't do anything about the way, when I was on the school board, that the school board deals with personnel issues. It's not, eh, one that where we, eh, we deal with things that individuals in our counties elect us to do, and also, when they say to us, "These are the things that are bothering us." Frankly, nobody's ever come to me and said, "I don't like what's going on in the commissioner of revenues office," or, "I don't like, eh, a lot of things, eh, I think we had a little problem with the treasurer, with the computers and all that kind of stuff." But, you know, in every situation that we have, in every aspect of government, there's going to be some issues in which some people are not going to like it. They're not going to be in favor of it. So, eh, and I'm not trying to be critical of, of anyone, but I'm trying to say that I think taking the steps that you, as that chair, and others on the board have said we need to take in order to make this successful. I'm like Ms. Biggs, I don't hear many comments. I don't hear many things that are there. And, eh, I see a holdover from some of the things that we did previously this year. And so, I'm not happy at all with trying to get rid of certain functions that we don't need. But I'm also concerned about putting those functions in a different order. And that's what we're just saying. I want to be sure that we're talking about efficiency of government. I want to be sure that we're talking about, eh, things that are good, some things that are bad, and what the cost benefits are of all of those things. So, my feeling is, I'm not going to be here, so therefore, I feel very, eh, I feel very tenuous about trying to give my opinion of what I think ought to happen. I'm still elected. I'm still here to December the thirty-first. I'm still representative of the people in District A, and it will remain that way until December thirty-first. But this is such a, and this is a very important thing we're looking at and undertaking. Now, I'm not in a court of law. I don't mean to debate. I don't mean to, eh, eh, I'm just talking about what I feel and some of the things that I think are leading me down a path to say, "Well, all we're doing is saying, these two things are great." Now, this is how I feel. This is not how anybody else feels. I don't, I don't know those things. We're all welcome to our own opinions. Maybe you don't feel that way, but maybe I do. And I don't think I'm likely to change. So, eh, I think that, eh, this is something that, I know the two people that will be on the board are sitting in the audience. They're hearing the arguments. I don't know whether or not we've given them copies of the information that we've gotten, but I think they should have it. And, eh, if you don't like what I'm saying, it's okay. I don't, I really, eh, that's the way I feel about it all, because I may not like what you're saying. Or I may not agree with what you're saying. And it's okay if you don't agree with me, but I don't want to get in here and be, belabor that kind of thing. I don't want it to go here, four of us, or three of us, or two of us agree, and we're not going to change our minds. Four of us get angry because two of us are not agreeing with what three of us are doing. I don't want, I know that goes on any time we have to get a decision. And I can sit here and tell you what I know everybody was gonna, is gonna say to what I've said, because I know you too well. And I'm thinking that it's not right for me to sit here and say these things to you guys, because I'm not going to be around. Now, none of us, we all might walk out here in the middle of the street, and that's the end of us. And I know that, you, none of us are sure past this minute, but I know, if I live past this minute to December thirty-first, I will no longer be on this board. That breaks my heart in one way, because I've given twenty years of my life because I wanted to, because I appreciate what's going on. But I do want to say, I am not thinking negatively about these issues, because that's nothing I've heard to give me a negative opinion. Not from administrators and not from board members. So, that's how I feel. I, and, and it's, it's just me, and, you know, remember, I'm just an old lady. But I have my opinion. I appreciate everybody else's opinion too. So, please don't sit around and argue with me over it tonight, what I said. So please don't sit around and argue with me over it tonight, what I said. If you want to say something, fine, but don't argue with me, because it serves no purpose. Thank you.
Supervisor Creed?
No.
Anyone else?
I do have one thing, and then I'll quit. I do have concerns over this whole board being elected at one time. I mean, it's one locality, I know, I talked to several staff members about it. They have, they had the same situation. And when the new members come on, the county administrator, the attorney, everybody was gone. They wanted a new, start it fresh. But I'm here to listen.
Well, I want to start off with a few things, and some of them are on video. I have that good fortune that, if you'll recall, before we went forward, I asked everyone on this board if we wanted to gather information. I didn't force it down anyone's throat. It wasn't something that was from top down. And I looked and I asked everyone here, and they gave a thumbs up to gather information. In gathering and selecting Professor Holt, I contacted Virginia Tech. I initially contacted their history department. Their history department sent me to their public information. Their public information put me to their local government and the head of that department. I didn't ask for politics. I didn't ask for opinion. The only thing I asked her to do is provide us a history, and specifically not to make a recommendation to this board, because I didn't feel that it was her place as professor and just to provide us facts. I have directed staff in any way, shape, or form as to provide, one way or the other, I asked them to provide us the facts and to answer the questions that were put there. In regards to our two new board members, they have been here, and I may be wrong, from almost every single meeting back, maybe as long back as April or May. They have attended well. I have spoken with both of them. And even at our last meeting, we said that there wasn't going to be a decision that was going to be made this year, it would probably be next, so everyone would have time to contemplate upon it. We wanted to hear from all sides. There is some potential costs. There is, so far, the Commissioner of Revenue, the folks, I don't think it's gotten back with us. We agreed to pay their mileage and their hotel rooms. To gather information in regards to constitutional officers, I think it's an important step. When you look at some of the more modern and forward-thinking counties, they're eliminating these positions. And looking back on what the professor talked about, we used to have, I think it was 12 different officers. And over time, some of those things have been eliminated and consolidated. And so in looking at that, I wanted to see those savings and see if that was a possibility for us to move forward. Frankly, the information that Marty provided us and that all seven would go up for reelection does make me pause. But I also look at the counties where I've seen that radical change are not nearly as diverse as ours. To say that the folks in G think exactly the way they do in B isn't correct. And to think if there was a countywide where everybody said, "We're having a massive change," that would be, somebody done something wrong. And maybe all seven of us would need to go out. But those, we have a great amount of diversity. Now, thinking back to what Supervisor Demont's talking about, it is geography in many ways. We have rural areas, which is still primary farming out in Ryan. We have mine area, which is changing dramatically. We have a lot of graduate students now that are moving into the Christiansburg area. And we're going to see this county change, but I still think it's very different. And I will say this, yes, that might be putting some pressure on Sarah and Steve in their first few meetings. But my first few meetings, we were talking about 12 cent to 14 cent. I think the mayor, the school board may have requested a 24 cent tax increase. I got up to speed pretty quick, and they've done more homework than I did. And so I know that sometimes that they may have some difficult decisions. But what I would like to do is to continue forward to gather the information, then give us some time to think about it. I've gotten a letter from a citizen who's offered to help financially, that thinks it's a great idea, and won, and the like, in passing the resolutions. But I want to gather the information. I want to listen to what Alamo County said, and what were the savings. I want to listen to, I know it was back in 1972, I think it was, when Ronan did it and then kind of came back. But I want to try to find out those ideas. And then when we make a decision, I want them to have an informed decision. And I know that I am protective of the staff. But part of the reason I'm protective of the staff is that I don't want to see them get put in the middle on decisions that really are on us.
I know that. I just asked for the, huh?
I'm speaking, ma'am, and I didn't interrupt.
I know you're looking at me.
Ma'am?
You.
I didn't interrupt, I didn't interrupt you a second. And I expect you to extend me the same courtesy. And it is my job as the chair to run this board.
Shall I leave?
No, ma'am.
I will.
Ma'am?
If you.
All I'm asking you to do is extend the same courtesy that you extended to me, I extend to you.
But you are talking to me directly.
No, ma'am. I am talking to the board, and I'm addressing, and I expect you to extend the same courtesy to me that I extended to you, because I am a fellow member of this board. And that's all I ask from you. And so that is all I'm asking for. Now, I don't want to see this be a divisive issue, and I don't want to see it go forward on the floor. And I've said, do I really want to see this go forward on a 4-3 vote? I don't. It's a decision that our citizens would have to make, and the voters would have to make. And that would be put on them as well, and they would be informed. But when I've asked folks on the street, and I said, "Can you tell me the functions of some of the Commissioner of Revenue?" Many folks don't know what exactly that office does. When I look at the situation, and I remember there being a sign out in front of the treasurer's office saying, "The reason this line is so long is because the board will not provide adequate funding." When we look at situations like that, and we look at a situation where we might be able to achieve higher interest rates, because we have a more professional and efficient financial department, those are savings to those taxpayer citizens, and I want to explore those things. Now, I'm willing to look at a consensus. If there is not four to go forward, we won't go forward any further. If the two new board members wish to bring it up, they may in January, and I'll be happy to listen to them. So at this point in time, do, I know, yes?
I was gonna, when we finish our work session, I was gonna make a friendly motion just to possibly table this discussion until we've seated our new board, and maybe have a retreat of some sort. I know Todd doesn't like it when we call it that.
Extended work session.
An extended work session of some sort, where we're identifying priorities. I was going to make a motion that we consider doing that as a way to involve the two incoming supervisors. I think they're, I know that they've been here to hear the whole discussion, but I think there's a value in also being a part of the discussion and being able to ask questions, and so.
I don't have, I think that is a reasonable suggestion, and we could start in the beginning. We really don't hit the budget season until, I guess we'll get our first estimates, as Mark mentioned, sometime in February. No pressure, but.
Probably, probably the end of Jan.
End of January. So we could try to at least see, and at that point in time, see where we're at, and see where we're going forward, and look at things at that point in time. So if there's that motion, or, I don't think we really need a motion unless.
Your work session.
No, I'll even come out, because this is just.
I think you can get consensus for direction of the board to go with that.
Consensus. So is there support in pushing this off until January? I see. All right. So what we'll do is, and I know the Commissioner of Revenue and.
I'll be glad to contact. I've already been in contact with the, I guess she's president of the Commissioners' Association, because she wanted to come and make a presentation as well. And so I'll let her know that the board's decided to defer that until a later date.
And I appreciate all of your willingness to consider that.
Sure.
Very much.
Is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd.
Hi.
Mr. Creed.
Hi.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demont.
Aye.
Chair and Chair.
Hi. Tell you what, it's 9:15. Let's take about a 15-minute break and come back at 9:30. All right, folks, we all ready? We did come out of work session, if I recall correctly. Next on our agenda is new business. First is a resolution of appreciation for Gary D. Creed.
So moved.
Second. Oh, I guess I can't second. Sorry. I believe there was a merry, oh, all right, there was three seconds down that way. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Well, yeah, I want to say something. Gary and I have been on the board a long time together, and I just want to tell you, you know, in public, how much I appreciated my relationship with you over the years, and how much I appreciated the way that you have represented your district. And I remember especially going through the Meadowbrook Library, you know, when we were working on that together. I want to tell you that I appreciate your leadership when you were chair, and I'm going to miss you, Gary. And I just wanted you to know that.
I'm going to miss me, too.
Any other discussion?
Yes, and I have to ditto that, because Gary, we've sat beside each other more than once, and so I've always found him to be very caring about individuals on the board as well as about the people in his district. And you, I like your wife, too. She's a nice lady.
I like her a little bit, my sister.
Any other discussion? Gary, it has been an honor, and it's an honor to vote on the resolution, and you well-deserved retirement. I hope you and Lynn have a lot of fun in the next few years, without having to worry about what you're doing on a Monday night. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demont.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Next subject. Next subject, resolution and appreciation of Annette Perkins.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. Okay, I guess behind myself, Annette's the longest-serving member at 20 years, and I just want to say how much I've appreciated the relationship that we've had on the board, and your value as a chair and a vice chair in your service, and your support of public education has just been phenomenal, not only on this board, but on the school board. And so I'm going to miss you, but I know I'll be seeing you. But I just want you to know that I feel that strongly about your service.
And I'd like to say, I know we've only worked together, had the privilege of working with you for two years, but you are truly a remarkable leader. The Meadows Project, I think, is a wonderful testament to your dedication to the citizens of your district, and I know that that will be enjoyed for many, many years to come, and what a beautiful legacy to leave.
I thank you. It's a legacy that I never would have expected. And I do want to say, you know, thank you for a resolution. I have met so many wonderful people in the 20 years, and I don't think I've met anybody that has not really had the best interests of the citizens at heart. We're all different. We all had things that are very important to us, more so, and education was, of course, my life since I was 22 years old. And I don't mind telling people, I'll be 79 next month, so that's the way it goes. But it's certainly been a distinct pleasure to serve with you all, and everybody that's been on this board has been a tremendous help. And in the last couple of years, I've surely needed that kind of support, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. And administrators, I just happened to have lunch today with Connie Goodman, and I told her to, why not, Clay is finished in Craig County, and so there've been lots of great administrators, and we have one right now, too. So, and a great deputy administrator and a great attorney to.
Thank you.
Lead us through all those things. But thank you for the kind words. I appreciate it.
Others? Well, I know that we just got into it a little bit, but you have been a shining example, especially when you have been dealing with your husband's illness, and how you have overcome that, and how you have included him in your life, and that is something that, overcoming that adversity, and that has been something I have witnessed over the, especially really these last two years that you've been dealing with. And you've done it with dignity, and you've done it with love for him. And I hope I never go through what you've gone through, but I hope that I go with it with the class and dignity that you've done.
Well, I thank you for that. I won't always say, "Why is this board of issues?" But I will tell you, my doctor said today, when I went to have some checkups, the one thing my doctor said to me is, and I hope I can get through this, he said, "You've been a wonderful wife to your husband, and it's a remarkable thing." So if you have, I said, "Well, I made a commitment 56 years ago, for better, for worse, for richer, for poorer, in sickness and in health, until death do us part." And I've tried to live up to that commitment. So that's where I am. But thank you, Greg. I'm, you know, what's your name? Thank you, Chris.
I don't think you've tried and have lived up to that commitment. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demont.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Well, I guess I can say aye.
I don't think you might have gone first.
We've got to cross back over this one.
Chair and Chair.
Aye.
Subject C, resolution and recognition, specifically, resolution of recognition of Duane Jamie Corrigan Police Department, Joey Griffith, Reiner Fire Department, Zach Duncan, Reiner Fire Department, and Deputy Josh Oakley, Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. Specifically, and I want to read a little bit of this resolution unless anyone objects. Whereas the sheriff brought to the attention of the board of supervisors that on October the 7th, 2017, firefighter Zach Duncan and firefighter Joey Griffith arrived at the scene of a vehicle crash to find a female trapped from the waist down inside an overturned vehicle. The vehicle was fully engulfed in flames, and the firefighters Duncan and Griffith immediately ran to the vehicle and attempted to lift the vehicle off the driver. And whereas their attempt to lift the vehicle was unsuccessful, and as they were devising an alternative plan to move the vehicle, Deputy Josh Oakley from the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department arrived on the scene and assisted the firefighters Duncan and Griffith with lifting the car off the driver long enough for Duane Jamie with the Corrigan Police Department to pull the driver from under the vehicle. Whereas at this time, Deputy Oakley and firefighter Duncan carried the driver to safety, where firefighter Duncan and firefighter Griffith administered first aid until EMS arrived on the scene. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Well, I think there's been. I think it's indicative of what all our rescue and fire personnel exemplify, at least in the 60-some years I've been here, so.
Subject, oh, wait.
We got both.
Excuse me, got a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demont.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Chair and Chair.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Subject D, resolution of recognition, Thomas Willis and Lucas Wilt. Whereas the sheriff brought to the attention of the board of supervisors that on October the 10th, 2017, Thomas Willis, who lives in Westville, and Lucas Wilt, who lives in Christiansburg, were on their way to work when they noticed smoke coming from a crashed vehicle. And whereas, they immediately stopped and approached the vehicle where they observed an individual, later determined to be the driver, laying on the ground beside the crashed vehicle, which was on fire. While Mr. Wilt called 911, Mr. Willis approached the vehicle and. While Mr. Wilt called 911, Mr. Willis approached the vehicle and carried the driver to safety. At some point in time after removing the driver from the danger, the crashed vehicle exploded and was engulfed in flames. Whereas Mr. Wilt and Mr. Willis continued to render first aid to the driver until such time as EMS arrived on the scene, whereas Mr. Wilt and Mr. Willis were willing to...willingly placed themselves at risk to aid another motorist. Had they not taken an action, the driver of the vehicle most likely would have suffered severe injuries or death. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like to point out that these two gentlemen here had no training.
And did that.
They took it upon theirselves, and me, for one, I can...I get kind of emotional when it's because I've seen several of these, for them to take it upon theirselves with no training. Me, that is...I mean, it's just, it's wonderful how they do it. Myself and the other fire and rescue have training, but they just jumped in to help a fellow citizen. I mean, that's just wonderful.
It sure is.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demonts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair and Chair.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
County attorneys report.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Didn't we already do this?
We did.
Voted to add.
The agenda.
Sorry.
That's right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion, other than what we've already said?
Well, I'd just like to say one thing, how proud we should be of that department. I mean, I know we're proud of each and every one, but it's...look what they accomplished, how the whole state...that's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Demonts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair and Chair.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now, county attorneys report.
Chad, your report. I will start. County administrators report. Just one item this evening, had a great conference, Vaco Annual Conference, and got to see Ms. Biggs in action in a number of the sessions. She did a great job as President overseeing a lot of the activities and events, and I think it's the first time I ever remember a President personally greeting everybody at the President's Reception, too, but she did a fabulous job with that. Some of the information wasn't all that exciting in terms of effect on counties on various things. I went to a couple of sessions on finance, a session on opioids, and also had a luncheon meeting with Secretary Hazel to hear some information. There's some scary things out there right now that we're going to...the counties and cities and towns are continuing to have to deal with. I did bring back a fair amount of information, I'm going to get that scanned in and out to you guys over the next week for those of you that weren't able to attend, but it's a well-attended conference, and it's always good to attend the sessions and also have the opportunity to catch up with folks between sessions as well, but appreciate those of you that were able to attend, and appreciate you allowing me to go along as well.
Did you get, like, the Jim Redgenball information? Because, yeah, that's what I really needed a copy of.
Yep, I got it.
Because I was being Secretary Hazel's work session when that was going on.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have this evening.
Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, well, as you know, my term at Vaco, as Vaco's President, came to an end yesterday, and our new President is Sharon Alflop, and I think she's going to do a great job. At the end of the conference, there is...I was told that there would be a donation from Vaco to the Amal Care and Adoption Center, which really made my day. You know, that's where I would want anything to go, to recognize, you know, the work that went into that. So with that being said, and everything that was going on, I just wanted to let you know that the number of new supervisors across the state, 80, there are going to be 80, and hopefully they'll take advantage of the Vaco training that will be provided for new supervisors, and I think that's going to occur in March. And we had our Region 10, as you know, Ms. Perkins was serving as a Vaco Board of Director on that, and we elected Lauren Yoder from Floyd County. Actually, we pushed Lauren into doing it. I think he'd be a great person to do it. He's been very interested in Vaco during the last two years, so he'll be doing that. And then from the other end of the region will be Sam Carter, who is replacing Sarah Carter, but Sam and Sarah are not related, even though they're both on the Board of Supervisors. Interesting. Also, at the Vaco meeting, we recognized longevity awards, and Ms. Perkins was recognized for her 20 years of service, and she received a framed plaque to that effect back there.
Very nice, thank you.
We also gave the Jefferson Cup, which is the most coveted award that can be awarded by Vaco, to the former Executive Director, Jim Campbell, and so he was there to receive it. Now, and I know that Supervisor Demonts has been working really hard on this Go Green initiative, and I wanted to report that there are six counties that received the award this year, so hopefully next year we can get it. The six that got it, Arlington, Chesterfield, and Rico, James City, Louisa, Prince George, so if they can do it, we can do it, with Supervisor Demonts, you know, pressing forward on that.
We do have staff that's going to be making a presentation in the weeks ahead on that as well, so.
Another thing that sort of came up, the state and local tax deduction fault that's being discussed at the federal level is very dangerous for us at this point because it's going to take money away from money that can come to us to pay for expenses. So what I did is I copied this information. I know that the people that went got this information, but they wanted us to have it so that you know, in case you want to contact, or we want, as a board, to contact our federal people on this. There should be, yeah, and then this one came in, and I know you got one, but...yeah, there's an extra. And then the only other thing I had, you know, on the New River Community Services Board, I copied the highlights and headlines from fall of 2017, and I made each of you a copy, three, four, five down there, and I have copies for our people out there, too, sitting in the audience. Okay. Anyway, what I wanted to show you on this, I thought you'd be interested to know that the same-day access program, this is something that everyone across the state is going to have to do, but our particular Community Services Board jumped ahead, and we were talking about this over a year ago. And so it's been going on for six months since its launch, and it's due, and it's off the ground, and it's running well, and it's designed so that if you have a problem, you get to see someone that same day, and a plan is made for you, instead of being on a waiting list or whatever. And, you know, if you have a mental health issue, probably it's not a good thing to be on a waiting list, and so this is a whole effort by the state to have people be able to come in and be addressed when they have an issue. And it involved a lot of training and assessors that are able to evaluate the needs and quickly get what services we have to them. I thought you would also be interested, since Montgomery County has a drug court, in the little article about the drug court that the drug courts are presently graduating people from the drug court system. This is something I personally would like to see expanded as much as possible because it keeps people out of incarceration, and it keeps them focused on their recovery, and it's not an easy thing, it's a tough thing, and when someone graduates from the program, it really says a lot. And then I thought you'd like to see, you know, about the peer recovery specialists, people that have been through, you know, an issue, helping other people. And the second page is the quarterly report for fiscal year 2017-18, and you can see where we sort of fit in there with, you know, how services that we're using and services that the other...these are all the entities that make up our Community Services Board, Floyd, Giles, Montgomery, Pulaski, Radford, and you can sort of see the usage, and I thought you might be interested in seeing that, and I sort of like the way that Mike Wade did this, he's great with communications there, put this all together, so I just wanted to bring that to you, and we're sort of using this as a PR guide when we, you know, go different places to let people know, what is your Community Services Board doing? So that's the end of my report, and I do want to thank you guys for your support this past year, when I was President of Vaco, because I know there was a lot of travel involved, but I try...I think I missed maybe one meeting, I think I was okay with everything else, but we figured I traveled over 9,000 miles, and the seven regional meetings I attended, I think, represented 46 counties, so it was a lot of travel, but it was well worth it, and Montgomery County got their name out there this year, so that's the end of my report.
Supervisor Demonts.
Three things. One, I'm sure all of you saw in the media report today that the town of Christiansburg is making significant strides towards curbside recycling for residents in the town, which I think is very exciting, not just for the town but for the county, of course, because their recycling would probably end up going through the Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority, which is well-equipped to handle the recycling needs of both Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg, and that was...the reason that they're moving forward on doing curbside, of course, is because Christiansburg customers are so heavily using the various drop-off locations they have through the town, so that is the wave of the future. I know that we'll probably get more demand, and I know I've bugged Craig about it over and over and over again for just increased recycling services and facilities in government buildings in the county and throughout the county, so that always gets me very excited. Also, I brought a...I shouldn't say I brought it, because Craig made it for me at my request.
You sent it to me to bring to you, so.
So last night, I had cause to attend the Blacksburg Town Council's meeting, and they adopted a resolution urging the Radford Army Ammunition Plant to address environmental hazards. Now, I was at the Town Council meeting on business, something from my other job, but I did stick around to first the resolution unanimously passed, but also to hear the citizens' comments on the resolution, because I knew it was something that would immediately come to us after it cleared that hurdle, and as I was leaving the meeting, I was stopped by some of the citizens that had been very active in this, and so I wanted to give you guys a copy of the town of Blacksburg's passed resolution, just as a point of maybe starting, if we might think about considering something like this. I would not suggest that we verbatim go word for word and adopt everything that the town has adopted, but I would be interested in looking at this as a board and seeing if there's a resolution that we can put together that would satisfy all of us and be a collaborative resolution to address the environmental hazards at the Radford Army Ammunition Plant. And then the last thing, I think I sent an email to all of you that I would attend the Old Blacksburg Middle School Site Neighborhood Meeting that was held on Monday while several of you were out of town, and I just wanted to report back briefly from that meeting that the developers gave a really nice presentation, and the feedback that I was hearing as I was listening to questions and comments made by citizens was fairly positive, and actually somewhat surprisingly positive, so I think that's a really nice step in the right direction. Of course, there were some negative comments as well, but there was a lot of positive feedback, and people seemed energized by what they were seeing and what the plans were for that site, so I promised you guys I would go and give you feedback, and that's what I heard at the meeting on Monday evening, and that's it. Thank you.
How many people were there, April?
It was held in Council Chambers, and there were people sitting in almost every single seat, and people circling the room standing, so it was a very cool...
Wow.
It was a very full chamber. I've only attended one other neighborhood meeting in Blacksburg that had that many attendees, and it was when the town was considering rezoning the entire Blacksburg Estates Mobile Home Community on Givens Lane. That was a pretty big meeting as well, so this was a big one. Lot of people there, a lot of people giving input.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
No report.
Supervisor Creed.
No.
Supervisor Perkins.
Yes, there are a couple of things I do want to give you all some information on, not this time, but I guess at our one meeting in December, if that's what we have, or whatever's going on. It concerns the airport and all of the construction that's going on over there. If you've tried to get through South Gate, you know there's a roundabout, and I think there is a second roundabout on up the road a little ways, and really, most of this should be done by the end of 2018. It may take a little bit longer, but much of the road, the first phase is completed, they're almost finished with the second phase, so all that's left will be a third phase that's putting the runway in and, you know, connecting things up, so once that's in, we will be able to handle jets of a little bit more, let's say, a little bit larger, really, is what it amounts to. There will not be any passenger, you know, service. This is strictly an executive airport in which there will be mainly used for the industries that are around and those that might develop, as well as tech football games. There were a very large number of planes that come in. We only have a very small place to hold of them, but we are building some hangars, and some private individuals have built hangars, and so now we have a few more places for planes to be parked. Not only that, we have two areas in which cars are parked up there, and I think there was something like 470 cars that were parked at the airport alone, and Michael St. Jean, who's our director, said that we have earned quite a bit of money for these things this year, and, you know, the four entities that are in the Airport Authority have been giving since the airport started, a certain sum of money, about $50,000 each, so that we have been able to stay even with the board and have a little bit left over. And one of the things about having some larger airplanes come in from executive individuals, they can take in more fuel, and that's how the airport will be able to make more fuel, and it should not be very long, I think, before we're able to say to the entities that give us money, we either will not have to have all that money or maybe only very small amounts of it. So anyway, I think that's a good sign for all of us, but it's primarily for the businesses and industry there. So I want to give you a report on those. When the report's finished, we have one more football game, and so it will be ready then. And I do want to say some things about Vaco. To tell you the truth, I don't think I could walk another step. I don't see how Mary did everything that she did do. I will tell you, she has been gone every single week practically, someplace all around the state. I don't think there's really been another President that's done as much as she did. I know Don Hart, who's still on the board, said he went to every, you know, board meeting. He came here, as a matter of fact, but Mary has been to the regional meetings, and not only that, there's been a spinoff from some of the other things she's doing with the Children's Services Board, with Dr. Hazel, now the Criminal Justice Committee and Board, and several other things that people have asked her to do as a spinoff for some of these things. And I was never so shocked this, when we got to where the convention was that Mary had to go talk to the golfers and give them a welcome, and it was only, what, 30 degrees? And by the afternoon...
It's cold.
Cold. And by the afternoon, it went up to 35. Honestly, I guess it's never too cold or too hot to play golf. Is that right? Is that right, men? Because, or women? But I will have to say this, Mary has done a fantastic job. I don't think any of us know how much time she really had to spend in this particular job, and I don't think a lot of us realize just how important it was to her, but also how important it was to the whole of Vaco. And I think that this is something she'll always remember and be a part of, and Mary's been a very loyal supporter of Vaco the whole time she's been on this board. So how long have you been on the Board of Directors?
I don't even know. It's been a while.
It's been a long time. So she's finishing her 22nd year, so she's got maybe a couple of years, but I've got her beat by 12 years in age, so we'll see what gives with Mary. So anyway, Mary deserves a great deal of credit and a great deal of thank you for what she has done in that particular job, better than any I've seen. So thank you, Mary, and maybe now we can get a little rest, or maybe we can go out to eat lunch or something, you know? Okay, that's it. Thank you all.
Supervisor King.
I don't have much. I'd just like to tell the Red Star's office how much I appreciate how hard they worked Tuesday. I know I talked to them several times and come in that night and they were still working.
It's a long day for them.
It was a long day, a long day. And not to point anybody out, but I also would like to thank the people that worked the polls that stood out there for your candidate. I mean, that was, it don't matter what side you root for, as long as you get out and vote. I've always said that, and I appreciate both sides for standing out in that cold.
Thank you. I've got a few things, and my first was, sometimes it's the things that you don't see. We had an election, I didn't get a single email saying that there were problems, and that starts first with those officers of election who work 14, 15, 16-hour days for not very much money to make sure that democracy exists here in Montgomery County. And I don't know if anybody else, but I didn't get a single complaint, not a phone call, anything, and at one point in time, I'll stand by counsel in case something did come up. But that also comes from leadership. And Connie Byer, I think this is her, she's had a primary, but this is her first election that she dealt with, and it went seamlessly. And so she should, as well as the officers of election, but she should be commended as well. I was at Vaco as well, and shifting gears a little bit, several counties who have fire and rescue, all volunteer, started talking about how their volunteers are going down and how fortunate we are to have Blacksburg Fire and Rescue and all the other volunteers that we have, and we have started to take some steps to ensure that we keep our volunteer firefighters and rescue squad members vibrant and keep that system alive. We are the envy of some of the other larger jurisdictions that are losing members and are having to go to pay fire and rescue. Speaking of Vaco, the watching Mary move around was like watching a hummingbird from one spot to the next, and constant movement, and she was a fantastic ambassador for Montgomery County. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask and say, give her a round of applause for all the work she's done.
Thank you.
I learned a few things while I was down at Vaco. One, that we're very fortunate about fire and rescue, but also I got some information in regards to solar panels and trying to make, we're already steps ahead. Our planning department has made us ready. Hopefully, we'll get some of the solar farms that are going out throughout the state, but also spoke with different internet providers about potential grants and those items. Also had coffee with Mayor-elect Leslie Hager Smith yesterday. We went to Lefty's, and actually neither one of us had coffee, we both had tea. But it was a very positive meeting. We went through and tried to focus on the future and how we can work better together and open communication and making sure that we don't see some of the things that we saw regarding the two school properties, and we continue to see the positives where we did work together as with the 911 Authority, the Water Authority, and so many other things. And so I'm hopeful that we'll put the past behind us and move forward, and as I said, it was a very positive meeting. That being said, if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.